The Village Board of Trustees for December 21st, 2015 to order at 6:30 PM. There is a quorum and the agenda was properly posted. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now take nominations for Chairman Rotem for the December 21st meeting.
I'm going to nominate Jennifer.
There's been a motion in the second to nominate Jennifer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay. Item five, the public appearances, public's opportunity to speak about any subject that is not a specific agenda item. Jay, you're here for something else, right? Unless you had something you wanted to say?
No, I'm good.
Alright. Item six, discuss and consider the minutes of the regular scheduled meeting of the Village Board of December 7th, 2015.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion?
I have a question because it involves me. The motion to approve the extension of the lease, did I really make that? I thought it was Jennifer.
Do you remember?
I don't know. It sounds like something I do.
I might have. It doesn't really matter.
Did you second it?
I think I seconded it.
Maybe I have it backwards. I will make that change.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
Nothing that I can...
Okay. So with that change, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. With the permission of the Board, this next, the presentation to the Board, the group is going to be here at 7:30 to accommodate the winter sports practices and such. So with the permission of the Board, could we move that?
Sure.
No unfinished business. Item nine, new business. Discuss and consider the approval of Resolution 2015-13, a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of up to $730,296 water system revenue bonds, Series 2015, and providing for other details and covenants with respect thereto.
This was a resolution that was on the agenda last time and Bond Council asked us to table it until they could clear up some signing to figure out the, if the acting president that you guys named, as far as Jennifer, could sign these documents and they have confirmed that. So this can be signed now by Jennifer following the meeting, excuse me. So...
That was the only issue now?
Yeah.
Motion to approve Resolution 2015-13, sale of, authorizing issue and sale of water system revenue bonds.
So a second?
Second.
And again, this was the reservoir two improvements that are now finished. So this is for the, to close on that loan.
So a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I was going to ask Matt to fill in the blanks as to why, but he just did. So yeah, just to give the community an opportunity to see more about what's going on. Unless there's anything else other than the reservoir two on that?
And just to clarify, reservoir two is which?
It's the...
Older one?
It's the, the now, would have been middle, middle one if the other one was the southern one's kept.
It used to be the blue tube.
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Nine B, discuss and consider agreement with Briar Patch for peer court related services.
I'm wondering if we could table this till we get to, under the Law Enforcement Committee because that kind of deals with that sort of as a piece of that pie.
Would it be okay to maybe have the Law Enforcement put, move that up?
You want us to go first, that's fine. Okay.
Is everybody okay with that?
That's fine. I do know that the municipal judge plans to be here. He called me today and told me that, but he didn't plan apparently to listen to the mixed act of fellow group.
That is to his detriment.
I understand, but, so, we may want to wait just until he gets here.
Okay. Sorry, Jay.
So why don't we just do this, why don't we just have a motion to take Items 10C1 out of order and be discussed with Item 9B?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to combine those two items. Is there any discussion? Upon hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any deductions?
The item table it.
Motion to table.
Okay.
Motion is second to table. Is there any discussion? Upon hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. 9C, discuss and consider operator license for Kevin Sartor with the Black Bear Inn and Austin Mollsteller to Stock and Go Windsor Avenue. Do we, we don't have any issues. Well, Chief, is there anything that you wanted to add?
We taking them together?
I think we can take them together unless somebody has a burning desire to not take them together.
So then, let me make the motion then, motion to approve Kevin Sartor and Austin Mollsteller for the operator license?
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve those two. Is there any discussion? I just have one thing. On his application, it's, he says, the spelling of his name, now it's flipping. S-A-R-T-O-I-C he's written in there and then, is that just a typo dub?
On the agenda?
On the agenda.
I thought he took it off of his Learn to Serve certificate. Let me double check.
It's the same way on his application as it is on his work.
Okay.
So that's just a typo.
Yep.
So anything else? Okay. All those in favor of Kevin Sartor and, I'm sorry, I can't get to the timing. Kevin Sartor and Austin Mollsteller.
Aye.
Oh, aye.
Do we need to have a refresher? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 10, reports from Village Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Community Development Authority.
We did not have a quorum. However, we did have a presentation from a firm that helps, their business is attracting retail and I will let Matt and Aaron address that.
Yeah, essentially a retail, retail recruitment consulting firm that contacted me through one of the conferences I went to and it's something that Aaron and I were looking into is a potential option, not necessarily that firm, but looking into doing an RFP and going through the CDA and then, of course, the Board to see if, to get some help there for actual recruitment and data for retail establishments, so. But yeah, we just heard, basically heard from the present, from presentation, yeah, we didn't have a quorum, so.
Do we need...
There was no action taken.
Do we need additional subs or something for that committee because it seems that there's a lot of times there's not a quorum?
There's just citizen, citizen members weren't there, so.
Is this going to be a kind of continuing issue or?
I don't think so. Because, I mean, they've been there regularly, but they just happen not to be there that many.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. I see Judge Hefinger is here, so if, we'll go back up to 9B along with 10C1. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. In your, in your packet, I'll start with 9B. In your packet is a draft contract with Briar Patch. We've, the village has had a contract with them for, since approximately 2005 and somewhere along the line, the Board would wait until after the budget was approved and if this, and if there were funds available for Briar Patch, then at the next meeting, a proposed contract would be brought and the contract has not really changed very much at all over the course of time. It's a $6,000 a year payment and on page one and two of the contract or the agreement for services is a outline of the obligations of Briar Patch. It used to be called Youth Services of Southern Wisconsin. Now it is called Briar Patch Youth Services. Jay Kiefer has been our primary contact person and he is here this evening and I don't know if he has anything that he would like to present and then we can open it up to the Board for questions.
Did you have anything you wanted to leave off with Jay or does anybody from the Board have questions for Jay? Want to come on?
I was going to say something to you. I have anything to add, I was going to, to present. You know, I was more available just for questions. And if there's any concerns or questions with regards to the agreement, you know, as Lee pointed out, it's been about 11 years that we've been doing peer court out here. 2000 is when we actually began, the agency began peer court services. There is a huge movement, the City of Madison, Chief Kovall, the City of Madison Police Department made a decision beginning October 1st to eliminate all municipal court citations, not traffic, but all municipal court citations, retail theft, possession, underage drinking, curfews, all those kinds of things. They issue what's called a restorative justice ticket that goes through YWCA, gets bundled through us and the YWCA, we provide peer court services and restorative justice circles to all kids. Last year, 2014, excuse me, that was 800, would have been 862 tickets. So gearing up, we received some new state funding, wrote a grant to support that funding. Beginning January 1st, we begin that activity. We're anticipating at least 200 to 300 kids that will be coming through our agency alone for that service that, this will be part of that. That means no difference in service to the Village of Cottage Grove. We still have the capacity to work with up to six kids. We don't control the referrals, those are controlled by, by the judge, by law enforcement referrals that come to us. We work at the behest of whatever steering committee asks of us through you all. I know there's some new Board members. I've always opened myself up, if you ever would like to get together outside of there to learn more about all the things that we do, I'd be glad to be able to do that. I can also answer questions tonight, things like that. For me, I've been involved with the agency, hate to admit it, since 1988, so I'm an old guy, but I really believe in peer court. That was not something I would have said in 2000. I had to be convinced that peer court was a valuable part of what we offered. We work with about 3,000 kids a year throughout Dane County, anywhere between ages of 10 to 24. We have federal grants that supports all of our runaway homeless youth services that we can work up to 24-year-olds, so it makes us unique to be able to access a lot of the different services that we provide through peer court at no charge to any of the kids that participate in it. So family counseling, emergency shelter use, things like that, if they're kids that come out of the peer court experience and they won't necessarily show up in what you all see, I reprovide a, every other month, report with the steering committee of all of our results. It may come across as referral made to Briar Patch Youth and Family Services, family counseling. That could be up to two to three years of family counseling that we provide at no cost to the family. We don't report back on all of those things. When it has community service, sorry, I'm fighting a cold, when we have community service that's ordered, those are all done through our community service work crews. So last year, I think we had 150 hours of community service that kids in Cottage Grove participated in. Most of that came in the form of our work crews that are supervised by our staff. Again, that's all part of the $6,000 contract that we have with the Village of Cottage Grove. For peer court alone, our overall annual budget is about $150,000, so I do a lot of fundraising and things like that to offset that other cost. Overall, the agency budget is about 1.6 million, so this is, while it may seem a small part of it, it's not. We take that as seriously as we do any of our other larger contracts. It's why I'm out here, it's why I come to all the steering committee meetings, so I appreciate the opportunity that we've had to have, do peer court out here. And for me, as a resident of Cottage Grove since 97, it's been a real great opportunity to see our kids reserve services in the community in which they live. They don't come downtown. It's really meant to work with our families and our kids in the community, not get them formally involved in our juvenile justice system of which we have way too many kids that are involved. It really, for me, has been a real positive addition to the community. A little biased because obviously I work within the agency and things like that, but I guess I'll just leave it at that. I know the, you know, I certainly would like the chief and for Judge Hefinger to comment as well about that, but I'm just here to answer questions if you have any.
Questions for Jay?
So how many cases can you handle a year for Cottage Grove?
Up to 60.
60? And we're right around 30 right now at the end of this year?
Forty. I think it'll be about 40 by the time December runs through.
For the, I think, okay. So the last report I think we got was...
That would have been the end of December, or I'm sorry, end of November. So we had December yet that I don't know what the numbers were for December. I'd have to look, but I can't remember how many referrals that you made for, we all get, we get referrals from the judge.
Right, right. So, and then I guess part of the, we combined the two topics because of the, where the law enforcement was, we had some questions out of Law Enforcement Committee, Jack and I are all on that committee as well as Jen, and we had some questions as to, we noticed people who are over 18 were being put into peer court, which the, the contract doesn't really have those types of guidelines in there. It's really just a contract for services. You're going to do stuff, we're going to get paid for. But then doing a lot of the research and stuff, but I found a lot of news articles, different places, even out of state people. You know, 18 definitely no, 17 there's a little bit of a gray area. 16 to 12 is really the sweet spot of where we're looking at. So how are we getting 18-year-olds seem to be into the system?
Yep. Good question. When the steering committee was originally put together, they had made the decision that any kid who was still involved in high school would be able to participate, so that meant some kids were 18, some kids were 19. That was how it was kind of read into it. I think the contract actually says 17, doesn't it, Lee? Does that remember it? I think I read that.
Let me check.
Anyway, to answer your, I don't disagree with any, anything that you said about, you know, the research or not, it's truly up to the community. Some community, communities, Oregon prefers to have all kids who are in high school, which would be up to 19 because some kids are still 19 when they graduate from high school. The City of Sun Prairie prefers to have up to 17. Again, it's your decision because that's what you're...
So are they blanketing by the age or are they saying you're still in high school, you can go in? If you're 19 and you're not in high school, you're in or you have to be in high school?
No, they're, the other committees use the, kind of predetermined if they're still in high school.
If they're still in high school.
Correct.
But the committee decides.
Mm-hmm. Yep. It's up to the community. If this, you know, if the steering committee made a recommendation to us, to you all, that said that up to 17-year-olds is what it should be?
It says 17, but it doesn't say it in the contract, just states it in the...
Okay. I thought I read 17 somewhere, but, and we have always utilized 18 and 19-year-olds referrals because, like I said, we have the ability to work. The federal government recognizes up to the age of 24, believe it or not, as a youth, so we can work with kids, up to kids, up to 24.
It doesn't say it in the contract and that's my mistake to give the ages as 12 to 17. I forgot about the, the high school.
So we, we made, has the village made that decision? Is that, is that a...
That's my understanding is that the steering committee, the first, when they first started out, made the decision that if they were still in high school, then they could qualify for it.
Okay. So that clarified that?
Yeah, I'm going to get the high school part of it. One of the other questions we had from the law enforcement side of it was, these offenders are given this little green trifle pamphlet that says, are you under 17? Is this your first offense? And that kind of comes across as that should be the guidelines? And I don't know if there's a disconnect then between what we're doing and what that pamphlet is?
Yeah, that, that is an older one that we have and so I would certainly say one of the things we would want, whenever the decision is, we would upgrade that to be reflective of whatever you decide. The, and way back when it was, way back, 10 years ago, shouldn't say way back. When it was started, the referrals could come either through law enforcement, so law enforcement could make those referrals directly, they could come through the judge in the City of Sun Prairie, they come through law enforcement and through Judge Hebel, who's the municipal court judge there. So in the City of Madison, for instance, Judge Kovall, who happens to be Chief Kovall's brother, he is fine with not receiving any of those dispositions, so the trifle that kids get, in the City of Madison, they don't go to municipal court at all. Those are given directly by police officers and then they go right to the YWCA who serves as a clearinghouse to get them connected with services.
Right. The other part of the discussion we had too was the issue of the traffic offenses being handled in peer court, which to me, honestly, it defeats the purpose of a probationary license.
Yep. We had talked about, and I don't know if it was just something within the, how it was written, but we had talked about, again, I'm speaking for the committee, but I can let Harvey speak because he's the liaison. It was my understanding that the steering committee had made the agreement that any traffic offenses would be handled through law enforcement and that we would continue to receive referrals through Judge Hefinger, through all the other offenses. To that effect.
That was, that was our consensus. Katie and I both had concerns as well about the traffic offenses and especially from the point perspective.
Right.
And, and we were told to bring it to the Board and that law enforcement be its steward.
Oh.
So...
At least it's here then.
Yeah.
That was going to be my question.
So, I mean, there was no need for me to say too much until...
Right.
But, but, but there was concerns and I know the judge has some differing, differing opinions, but I know that Katie and I were concerned about, about those.
Judge, did you want to add anything to this discussion?
Mark, maybe you can jump up and to the table with Jay.
Well, I sent an email to the Village Board outlining my thoughts on the proposal out of the Law Enforcement Committee, so if, you know, anybody has any questions of me, I don't really have much to add to my email. I was not an advocate of peer court to begin with, but observing its operation over the years, I've gotten to be a fan of it. I think it does a better job than, especially with the younger kids, than the traditional forfeiture point suspension route. Especially with younger kids, it's no good to give them a fine or forfeiture because they don't have any money to pay it and so it goes unpaid and they learn nothing from the whole thing. Or maybe the parent pays it, in which case what they learn is probably even worse. The way I think peer court works, what makes it useful is that going in front of the peer court, the kid has to really, more than the traditional method, actually think about what the offense was and what it means and so forth. Jay can probably talk to you better, but in terms of kids ending up in the regular circuit court juvenile system, kids who go through peer court are less likely to do it than kids who go through the traditional forfeiture route.
And just to clarify that, that statistic, that is, there's kids who are successful with completing their peer court disposition, so they have three months that we monitor, we work with them, we talk with them, we contact the parents on a regular basis, we contact the kid on a regular basis. Those kids who successfully complete that, and this has been true for about the last 10 to 12 years, checking juvenile C cap at the end of every year, we average about 5 or 6% across the board, not only the Village of Cottage Grove, City of Sun Prairie, Village of Oregon, and then the City of Madison, the kids who participate, about 5 or 6% of those kids will find their way to the formal juvenile justice system of which we also have a lot of programming for. So that's where they're assigned to social worker, they're under the supervision of Dane County Department of Human Services for a year, they have a judge, they have a district attorney that's assigned to them. Compared to kids who do not participate in peer court, who wind up coming through municipal court, about 25% of those kids will find their way to our formal juvenile court process. That's also pretty close to the national statistic too. Now, the chief I know has some, with regards to traffic offenses and things like that. This is the only community in which we've ever heard traffic offenses for peer court, so just full disclosure, I don't have any data on where that is at and I know the chief...
Jay, so your statistics, that's not you checking driving records for recidivism rates? That's for kids getting in trouble?
The formal juvenile justice, where they have the circuit court judge that they come before.
So after a case is heard and, who's following up and mandating that this stuff is completed?
That's us. That's our, my staff. That's what, that's part of the, the cost of the service that you guys have.
I have to follow up on that, Jay.
Is there, for lack of a better term, a certain amount of peer pressure because the, the task, the verdict, the things that the offender has to do is decided essentially by...
Jury of their peers.
By, by, by a jury of their peers. Is that a little bit of a factor in how successful?
It absolutely is, Harvey. It's a, it's a good question. You know, I think, again, that was me also initially in 2000, kind of getting over the whole power and control thing of me as an adult knowing what's best for what these kids need to be doing. And when I had the opportunity to sit in, and I usually come once or twice a year to the peer court here and the other ones, just to observe and to seem, to make sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. And the thoughtfulness and the pointiness of the questions that the kids ask are way more difficult and challenging than what I would probably come up with, they're very creative. They involve the parents, they ask what are the consequences at home, they ask what's going on with the young person in school. It's not uncommon for our kids to connect with those kids. They all sign an oath of confidentiality. In the 15 years that we've done peer court, we've never had a situation where kids talked about it at school about, oh, you know what Judge Hefinger did at, you know, peer court the other night. They sign an oath of confidentiality, so they can't talk about that. But to answer your question, maybe a little bit more involved is that they have a different way of looking at it than I would and so they get to those harder questions, they're able to ask them. And then the bigger hook for me with why I think it's successful is that many times, many of our volunteers that continue on with peer court are previously offenders and those are the kids that aren't disconnected to our community. They're not kids that are involved in sports, they're not kids that are involved in club activities within their schools, so they continue to be involved as volunteers and that's a unique perspective because they see it from the side of an offender. They said, well, you know what, you're lying because I've done that and I was at that party and I know what's going on. They have a, a unique perspective that I probably couldn't offer. So I think that's part of it for me, is that part of it as well, is that there is, I don't like to call it pressure, they just have better insight.
Okay.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems to me that the main issue here is these 17 and older traffic offenders, right?
Especially traffic.
Are you, I mean, do you feel, what are your thoughts on that? I mean, is this an effective route for, for all intents and purposes, an adult?
I really don't know. I mean, that, you know, the chief is right, I've, I've not seen any data on that, so, you know, I don't, I don't know. I would say, I couldn't comment on it with any, you know, knowledge of it being positive or negative. It's, it just really comes down to what, what the village would like to do with the offenders that we have. I think, you know, the judge would, I don't want to speak for him, but I know he, you know, has felt strongly that, again, the kids have, you know, a different perspective on that and holding them in a different way, but when it comes, I don't know what the Department of Motor Vehicles looks at with that either. I don't even... I don't even know if that's something, if we were to ask them if that's, you know, something that we can continue. I don't know if you've checked on that, chief, or not.
No, what I did is, I went to the municipal court clerk, and I asked her for the offenses that were on the current pure court, and I ran all their driving records. And their recidivism rate is thirty percent or higher. And I sent that to the village board in response to the judge's email, because I was concerned he was comparing apples and oranges. You have a five percent recidivism rate for non-traffic related offenses, but when it comes to driving offenses, it's one-third. And that's for this year. That's, so I did a quick snap, snap, you know, shot of what was out there for us. And I was very concerned, and my concerns were, I think, validated just by looking at this year. Would it be different if we ran it out over a five-year period? I don't know. But I'm concerned that we have this many kids reoffending, and some of these kids going into pure court, frankly, don't belong there. And that went to the village board. If they had any questions on that, I'd be more than happy to discuss it, but I really don't think that some of these kids are getting the idea when they go out and reoffend again, like the one, number two, went out and reoffended twice afterwards. One was referred to pure court.
For traffic?
Yeah.
Okay.
One was referred to pure court, she did forty in a twenty-five, two months later in a ten of driving, 'cause she ran into the back of someone. She gets referred to pure court, it disappears off her record. So the next time she gets into an offense with a police officer, he's gonna look at this and go, oh, clean driving record. No, she doesn't have a clean driving record. She offended twice, and it disappeared, 'cause it was referred to pure court. If it would've gone into the state traffic offense probationary license, she would've been close to losing her license. And a consequence of that is, go to a traffic class, get your points back, relearn how to be a good driver.
Dan, is a, kind of a hybrid system possible? On a first offense, maybe they would go to this, and on a second offense, would go a different direction?
No. Judge, did you have something to say?
Yeah, the chief's thirty percent statistic is kind of misleading, even though it may be accurate. Out of, I don't know, seven hundred fifty, eight hundred, however many cases of all kinds run through the municipal court in the last year, exactly eleven were traffic offenses that went to pure court. So when he says thirty percent, it sounds like dozens of people, but thirty percent of eleven is three or four. So, and if they had gotten fourth, I mean, the implicit argument is, well, if they'd have gotten the points and forfeiture, they wouldn't have reoffended. But what basis is there to think that? Kids get multiple tickets either way. There's no, there's certainly no system you could organize that would guarantee no one would ever get another ticket.
That's a tough argument, 'cause it basically invalidates the entire system. You're basically saying that it's not working for traffic, so I would then argue, why does it work for anything? For the traffic stuff, for me?
Well, I mean, I agree it's not working for traffic, unless you wanna say that the kids who got the subsequent tickets got the ticket because they went to pure court, and they wouldn't have got the ticket otherwise. And I, I see no basis to think that that's the case.
It's hunting statistics to justify each other's argument. I think pure court was designed to fill a hole in our, our youth program, where laws were created very strict for adults who should know better. And these laws were in place. So then we have people who are, you know, the children who need to be given a little bit of leeway, need to be put in front of their peers, and, you know, and help guide them back onto the path of, you know, being a good citizen, and being a good member of the community. The, the gap for traffic was already filled with DMV laws. The DMV already regulates the licensing program, they regulate the penalties for violating that trust that was given to us as drivers. And if you are within the age limits, they have already set a program in place for correcting the bad behavior. So there is no need to put traffic into pure court, because those systems already are in place. That's where I see is, you know, it's where systems and processes, you know, it already exists, so are we going over what we're supposed to be doing? You know, therefore, it's also adding costs. It's eleven cases, that's, that's eleven cases of other use that we could be seeing. We're already under the limit of sixty, we could be handling sixty, we're around forty. So there's twenty, there's twenty people we're not reaching, plus another ten or eleven that we could be reaching as well. I'm not sure what we're talking about here, 'cause I don't think traffic should be in pure court.
I, I like to, Kyle, you were headed someplace, what is the, if I, you know, if little Johnny gets pulled over for speeding, and he goes to pure court and then reoffends, why are we sending him back to pure court? What's the process for that?
Well, he wouldn't go back to pure court.
So you only get one shot at pure court?
Right. I mean, for the same offense, if you get speeding, and then speeding.
But if I, speeding, and then in a sense of driving, those are two different offenses, so?
Yeah, out of the eleven, there was one kid who got, who went to pure court twice for two different offenses, but I don't remember that kid. I mean, one out of eight hundred cases, or whatever it is. I don't remember what, what was going on in that one particular case.
Kinda going off of you guys' statistics, can also say it's being slanted, too, because you said that Cottage Grove's the only one that's sending people to trap, for traffic.
I think that's very common.
Well, but wait, there's, I mean, there's like two hundred and fifty-ish municipal courts in the state, and those municipalities do all different kinda stuff, as far as pure court is concerned. A lot of them don't have any pure court at all. Some of them do it the way we've been doing it. Some of them don't use it for traffic, like Madison, for example. And others don't use it for traffic, but have other alternate disposition programs going, like the judge in Sun Prairie, Hebel. What he does is, he negotiates a contract with the kid and his parents, whereby if, say, the kid gets a three-point speeding ticket, the kid can't drive his car for three weeks. And then if, at the end of the three weeks, the parent attests that the kid didn't drive during those three weeks, the ticket goes away. It's the same outcome as successfully completing pure court. And I would say that that program is a little, quite a bit looser than what the kid has to go through at pure court.
Are you aware of any other municipalities putting traffic offenses in front of pure court currently? Thank you.
McFarland, well, Sun Prairie does what I said. McFarland and some others op, utilize this other program called Alive at Twenty-Five. I'm not sure what the details, how that exactly works, but it ends up the same way, the ticket goes away. And I think you were raising another point about the matter of the points. I think that another possibility would be, 'cause the kid always has to plead guilty or no contest first, before pure court becomes an option. What would have to be done is, the ticket would have to be reported to the DMV as if, you know, there was no pure court, but then the kid could still do pure court with the carrot being, getting out from under the forfeiture. So, 'cause the DMV, they don't, they don't care anything about the forfeiture. So you could do that, I guess.
Thank you.
That might solve the problem of officers potentially stopping somebody who's offended two or three times and thinking they're a first-time offender, then?
So they get report, yeah, they get reported, and, and it, it's true, there are, there are other diversion programs, and that don't necessarily use pure court, but do try to deal with juveniles a certain way. And that would be a possibility where you would still report the points. And so you avoid the issue of someone who gets a citation, and then would have it just dismissed, and it's like it never happened. They would actually, the points would actually be reported to the DMV, and then the fine forfeiture, which is, which is difficult to collect often in these cases. That might be something that can, could be run through pure court.
Chief, what's your opinion on that?
I don't care about the fines. Our budget is not driven by fines, unlike previous locations I've meant. So I don't care about the fines. That's up to the village board. That's, that's income. You know, some income, it's small, but my main concern is public safety, and that's why I brought this up. I wasn't seeking any veto power over what goes into the court, none of that. It's public safety, and I'm concerned about some of these kids getting their driving records wiped clean, and nobody knowing about it. And that's essentially what happens afterwards.
Also, keep in mind that if someone gets a hundred and fifty dollar ticket, the municipality does not receive much of that. Most of it is eaten up by state cause, county cause. Deb might be able to get, I don't know if she's got any handle on that at all, but.
Like ten, fifteen percent.
Very.
It's very small.
So, so it's not a, it's not a big income generator.
No. So is that a?
Or at least it's not supposed to.
Would that be a fair compromise, then?
Oh, well, that would, I would say it would still be, pure court would still be useful. Yeah, I would say that would, that would, that would work.
So, yeah, I really, it bothers me to know that these kids, you know, have no record. You know, the first time I get, but the second, third time, even if it's, you know, slightly different offenses, still track.
You think a motion's in order?
I think a motion's in order. Unless you have something else?
Sorry, the one last thing, I mean, pure court is designed around the municipal ordinances, stuff that we can control. We're dabbling into state statutes and DMV and state organizations, and I'm not sure we're really supposed to be doing that stuff. I mean, pure court has a very, very good purpose, a very good goal, and without the console of, you know, the state saying, hey, we're gonna start taking some of these over, and we're changing what you've already put out in legislation of how to handle youth offenses on traffic incidents? You know, I, that, I'm not sure that's what we're here to be doing.
Does this compromise give you heartburn? Lee?
No. The municipal court has exclusive jurisdiction over an action which the municipality seeks to impose forfeitures for violations of municipal ordinances of the municipality that operate, that operates the court. And what our municipal ordinances have done is adopted the state statutes. So, I mean, I don't think that we're, if, if I felt that we were compromising the DMV in any way, the DMV doesn't get involved in any of the, the money aspect of it. I, I think they probably get their share, everyone else seems to. But I, I do think that from a jurisdictional point of view, that the municipal judge or the village board could institute a program like this.
So we have to update the ordinances?
Um, what, I think what we would update is the, the contract with, with youth services. Then we would make it specific in terms of what, or, right, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, my age.
We should even detail the, the high school age issue, too, because that's not really in here, and it's not really clear, as far as I can remember.
Yeah, I wasn't worried. The law enforcement, I didn't know about the high school, but, I mean, it makes sense to not let the kid's traffic ticket go away, if you're gonna handle it in pure court, because that kind of has a bad effect on the law enforcement side of it.
I think the seventeen-year-old piece came into play, because chapter nine thirty-eight recognizes seventeen-year-olds as adults.
Right.
So when chapter forty-eight became chapter nine thirty-eight, that's when they made that move in the mid-nineties, I think, Lee, ninety-six-ish? But that's when all seventeen-year-old kids went to adult court. And so this pure court was looked at as a way to kind of say, well, you know, seventeen, eighteen-year-old kids are still in high school, why are we treating them municipally as adults? Let's put them back at that. So that's, that's how it came about. But chapter nine thirty-eight recognizes seventeen-year-olds as adults, and so that's where that change came.
So, so can we make a motion to update, accept a contract provisional for one more month as it stands? Extend this one for a month, and then have the contract updated with the proper language?
Sure.
'Cause I'd rather see the language.
Well, it's already, oh.
No, we want to.
We would just extend it for.
Extended for a month, or two months, whatever.
I guess I wanted to speak up, I kinda have a problem from when we're even having this discussion. In my opinion, this should be done prior to budget, so I would really like to.
The direction should be, to do exactly that, which would be to have the contract run through X period of time, but to be brought to the board at Y period of time, and that could be put in the contract as well.
I mean, we could, I don't know, we could do it for six months, and do exactly half, and, and maybe be in a better position going into next year's budget season and discuss it then, or something along those lines.
I think that probably needs to be a year, but I certainly, we can say that it needs to be renewed prior, or, or during the budget cycle, or during the budget discussions.
Let me, and just to pick up on that, and just so the board understands, I always try to make sure that our contracts don't extend automatically, because invariably, you look how Matt's been here for X amount of time, he's had fourteen different board members already. And so people forget. And so what I try to make sure is that the contract runs for a specific period of time, and then it, if it's not renewed, it just goes away. So that, you know, just, I'll be happy to amend this any way you want to.
We'll need a motion, unless you have something else?
No, just so it's done prior to the budget instead of after.
Or, yeah.
So, and the clarification on the ages, I thought was a good point. I think that should be in there. Clarification on how many times, I guess? I heard sixty, but then I thought it read seventy-two, maybe? 'Cause I thought it said six times a month, or something?
You can handle up to?
No, we can handle up to six cases a month.
Six cases, so that's seventy-two, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's seventy-two.
Sorry, originally from Illinois.
So six, that's not much.
Good answer.
Okay, just, I guess clarifying some of that stuff up in here would be good, but other than that, I think it's a good service.
Just a clarification on the budget, just because it's in the budget doesn't mean that, that it's anything to do with the contract at all, so. That just means that the money's available if the contract's approved.
Right.
So it is in the budget?
Yeah, the money's available for that, for that purpose.
I knew it was in the budget, I just think talking about a contract being signed should be done prior to finalizing the budget.
Can I get some direction on the length, then?
I would say a year.
The one year. The calendar year is fine, but I think we need to bring, we, I think, but Kyle's saying it's just administratively, that the contract should come, come to the board in August or October, just prior to us seeing it.
The language that says that the contract would be brought to the board as part of the budget process.
That's right. So, I'll try, I'll try a motion here.
We're excited to hear it.
I will move that traffic offenses for, first of all, should, I will move that pure court handle cases for those individuals who are still in high school, and forfeiture only for traffic offenses, and that the contract renewal be brought forward during the budget process.
And that the offenses still be reported to the DMV.
That's why I said forfeiture only.
Okay.
Is, is the motion for drafting that, or you're trying, you're gonna put that in there?
I'm sorry.
Is, is that?
That was, that was the traffic for, traffic for, for forfeiture only. Is that sound? The other stuff stays the same.
First offense, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Why don't you read it back there, Deb?
No.
Well, no, I think, apologies, just, are, are we, are we gonna motion to have, an alternate potential option is to, your motion's still on the table, is to motion to extend the existing contract for a month, two months, whatever it is, and then ask staff to add the appropriate language.
Okay.
With, in the appropriate, with, work together and get it figured out. And that way, we have a document that we can read.
Okay.
And that way, we're not guessing on what the language will be. And that way, we, we have another right of refusal to say, hey, we don't have.
That's probably a better way to state it, is to extend the current contract for a month with direction to staff to take into consideration things that have been discussed, and bring us back in the contract. Is that fair?
The only thing is, is there's not clarification on things we've discussed.
Right, there's two pieces.
I don't necessarily agree with high school, actually.
No, okay.
Because, I just, I just think high school kinda leaves it open-ended. What if I continue to fail my junior and senior year, and I'm nineteen or twenty years old in high school yet, and? yet and, so I'm able to go.
Well, the second offender thing should, I mean, if you're second offense, you shouldn't be going back. Now, if second offense were this, a different issue, I got caught for graffiti and I got caught truancy or something, you're gonna continue to go to pure court and kind of abuse the system.
Right, but that's okay, because it's not traffic, I guess, if it's traffic and it's a second.
If it's traffic, it's one, it should be one and done in traffic.
I hate to interrupt, you're already here, but we've got a motion on the table, so we need to second it and get rid of it, or?
I need to know exactly, I didn't get the forfeiture thing.
Oh, what if we just withdraw all the motions for the time being? And then start fresh? Would, would the motioners and secuers agree to that?
I will agree.
To simply withdraw?
I don't think it ever got seconded.
There wasn't a second.
So I'll withdraw the motion.
Then, then I would say that the motion ought to be to extend the contract for a month with direction to staff to incorporate the discussion this evening for the board to consider at a meeting in January.
So moved.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second, do, are we okay with that, or you want it read back?
Oh, okay, and, and what, and trying to keep it simple then allows you to, if this has been motioned and seconded, it allows for discussion and the discussion is where you could give me specific direction in terms of, this is how I want the contract to look in January.
Does anybody have any comments to that effect?
Do we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Yeah.
Who was the, I'm sorry?
I seconded it.
Who was the original?
I think.
Okay, so we don't have to do the term because it's already in here, so that's number four in here, that's correct, so. We're really just talking about doing the age.
Age wise, it's open to discussion.
Isn't there, there's, there's a rule that the WIA has, that you can be, you know, you can be in high school, but you can't be like nineteen before a certain time or something like that, I don't know if that, that kind of goes to your question of, well, jeez, you know, if you got somebody that decides he wants to stay in high school for the rest of his life.
It took a five years to finish or something like that.
Yeah, right.
That's why I just feel like it's gray, I, I don't know, I'd almost rather just see a.
Eighteen and nineteen and younger.
Eighteen.
That would be pretty.
First offense.
Pretty unusual, too.
Nineteen in high school, there's bigger problems going on.
So you're saying, we're, we're, we're growing the age from the seventeen, whatever the plan for it was, the seventeen to nineteen hard and we're pulling out the high school part, just want to clarify.
No, I think you said eighteen.
No.
Or you could include both and just say up to eighteen years of age and still in high school?
Yeah, if you said.
They have to all.
If you just said nineteen, I mean, some people graduate when they're seventeen.
Yeah.
I mean, even under the current system, a nineteen year old who's been out of school for two years doesn't go to pure court.
Right.
Traffic or otherwise.
So.
So it's eighteen and still in high school. And in high school.
That's great, okay.
Okay.
Then, the term won't change then, but it will just make the clause in there that it'll be, visited earlier, and then, you want to make the clause about the forfeiting of fines?
Yeah.
Great.
So the traffic, traffic offenses for forfeiture only.
Yep.
Okay, does anybody have anything else?
I have one question. There was a comment about first offense, so is it eighteen and in high school and first offense, or just eighteen and in high school?
And first offense.
First offense for traffic.
For traffic.
First offense for traffic, yeah.
Okay, and when I do this draft, I'll send a copy to, to Jay, Mark, and Dan, because I'd like their input as well. And then we'll give it to you hopefully at the next, and, at the next board meeting, first board meeting in January, and the heebie, that is the municipal judge in San Freres, not the same heebie that sent you the blue book, his brother.
I'll call the question.
All right. Can you read the motion, Deb?
I'm still confused on the, the third tra, I'm sorry, the third traffic offenses thing. So I have ages eighteen and in high school and first offense for traffic, the contract is visited prior to budget, and then what was the traffic offenses comment?
That, that it would not deal with traffic offenses, it would only deal with traffic offense forfeitures, not the actual offense.
Okay, do I need to read that again? So the motion is, it's not the motion, the motion was to extend the contract and blah blah, but the direction to incorporate is that the age is eighteen and in high school and first traffic, or first offense for traffic, the contract is visited prior to budget and only deals with traffic, forfe, forfeitures for traffic offenses.
Does that sound right? Do you have any issues with that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
I'm gonna ask for a reset, so the kids are, are coming in now, we just need to do a little setup, so, we're gonna have you over there, but I need to give them a little direction, so.
Cool. Do you need, you don't need a thing?
Just a, just a. Your recess.
What does that mean?
My recess. We're playing the play.
Okay, all right, I'll call the Village Board meeting back, back to order. We're going to move up to item seven, Presentations to the Board. We, tonight we have the Monona Grove High School Mixed Acapella Group led by Ms. Lori Naharniak. I'll let her introduce the group.
Thank you. We are a newly formed acapella choir that just formed right before the winter concert in November. And we primarily will be doing contemporary acapella music. And there is a group sensation on YouTube called Pentatonix. And we are doing a song from their holiday album, and it's called "White Winter Hymnal." And I'll let them take it away.
Five, six, seven, eight. (Singing) I was following the, 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 I was following the pack all swallowed in their coats with scars of red tide round their throats to keep their little heads from falling in the snow. And I turned round and there you go, and Michael you would fall and turn the white snow red as strawberries in the summertime. (Singing) I was following the pack all swallowed in their coats with scars of red tide round their throats to keep their little heads from falling in the snow. And I turned round and there you go, and Michael you would fall and turn the white snow red as strawberries in the summertime. (Singing) I was following the pack all swallowed in their coats with scars of red tide round their throats to keep their little heads from falling in the snow. And I turned round and there you go, and Michael you would fall and turn the white snow red as strawberries in the summertime.
Yeah, we'll let you keep going with your meeting, but we'll just sing a little Christmas song. Okay, this is the ladies' third one. One, two, three, four.
We wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year. Good tidings we bring to you and your kin, we wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year. We wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas, we wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year. Good tidings we bring to you and your kin, we wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year. We wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year.
On behalf of the board, if anybody else wants to chime in, just absolutely lovely to have you here. Of course, I have a personal interest in this group, but just, it keeps it in perspective, some of the stuff we do here to hear from our kids. So, thank you for taking time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I had goosebumps. I don't know. That stuff's really good.
Item 10B, Deer Grove EMS Commission.
Well, we met, was that Thursday last week, Alex? A lot of things were discussed. It sounds like the officer of all the leadership wants to write about four or five grants with...
The what?
Four or five different grants that...
Oh, grants, okay.
...to be written for. And I guess, I kind of reiterated our position that when I heard the words "no strings attached", I was like, "Well, I doubt it," especially since one of them's federal. And then, as long as we're all buckled in here, their long-range plan for the ambulance replacement is to buy two ambulances at once and put them on an eight-year rotation, which...
Two at once?
Yeah.
Is there a two-to-one deal that we don't know about?
Well, I hope so, because we know what the last one cost. But, the way they presented it was getting more parity between stations of same vehicle, same equipment, same location, which is all good, but the cost of two ambulances at a further interval was presented as sort of an alternative to doing this one every three year thing. So, you may be hearing a presentation on that, and they can hopefully have some numbers together for you. Alex, anything that you want to...
Yeah, they, it was sort of, I don't know, I don't know how you felt, they did create a little subcommittee to talk about the ambulance thing, which was nice. So, they focused on, you know, they're taking the whole thing from the pie in the sky, I guess money's no object sort of option to boil it down to what is it that we really need and keep things consistent. They're about 72 calls above the 2014 number, so they're still running pretty hard, over almost 700 hours of volunteer coverage.
Yep.
So, tremendous amount of work.
Where are we on collections? How are we on collections?
We're actually doing pretty good. There were like zero write-offs last month. I mean, whatever new billing system they've got going is really...
It's working.
It's working. So, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, as far as run statistics, I think last month, there were seven calls in the Village of Deerfield, 28 in the Village of Cottage Grove.
And the staffing is...
So, when you hear about parity in staffing, that is something you might want to consider. And those run statistics, I can get you the most recent, like, last six months' worth, if anybody wants to see the trends of who's at Deerfield, who's at here, when, how often are they staffed. I think it was 440 hours at Station 2 and 444 at Station 1, which is us, with staffing last month.
But there was 11 days of non-coverage.
In the Village.
For Station 1 versus, I think, was it 2?
Correct, without even a first responder in the Village, yeah.
Seven days, eight days of non, oh yeah, without the first second car, right. So, it ended up being two days. We had 11 days of zero staff, zero truck staff, and there was two days at the Station 2.
So, basically, they're looking at hours as basically being fair rather than kind of...
That's kind of what they're doing. They've sort of split the staffing and the vehicle coverage equally, even though we're have a higher proportion.
Jack, if they had two new ambulances, do they have the staff to run those?
Oh, that's a very good question to ask.
Or every once in a while, I try to...
Yeah.
It's getting to be the end of the year.
They're getting there. I mean, when I look at most of the days, this is the Crew 1 and Crew 1.
Station 1 and Station 2.
Station 1 and Crew 2, Station 2, whatever, yeah, Crew 2.
Yeah.
If that's the ambulance, most of the times, they're both, they are both covered.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes there'll be a first responder at one station and then staffed ambulance at the other station, but I guess my thought process is, if you're going to be staffed, the first responder should be where the coverage is not, where the staffing is not, rather than, because sometimes you'll see the first responder is the same station where the ambulance is, and there's still nobody here, or vice versa.
Yeah.
You know, it's just like spread it around a little bit.
Are they, is the chief acknowledging that this is an issue, or is it a status quo?
I didn't really honestly get a good answer as to why that is. Some months, it's better, some months, it's kind of concerning. And it's really all based on a signup system, just for volunteers like myself, so that does skew it a little bit. Like, if you sign up to work in Cottage Grove or Deerfield, where the full-timers are, you know, they're dedicated, you know, the crew that goes over there is the crew that comes here. But there's, I've driven by there several times on weekends and seen nobody down here, so. Just, we're thinking about, I guess.
Well, it's something we need to address.
Yeah, what I asked Jack to do is...
Continuing...
I know, we've heard this multiple times now, so...
What I asked Jack to do is give me all the sheets for the past six months, including the calls and where they've been at, and then from there, I can throw it into Excel, map it, and then in January, I can present the data.
Right.
Give it to Jack and have him present it. You know, what's, you know, we're staffed, we're basically 50/50 staff if you look at the hours, but then when you look at the days, you know, where there are calls on those days, there's a lot of great questions, and I'm going to say that he's doing the job, and hopefully, he's doing the right job to the best of his ability.
With the 50/50 staffing...
Let's take a look at the numbers.
And the number of calls, what results is, there's a lot more trips made from Deerfield with lights and sirens coming over here than there is going the other direction. And that's something to think of.
And when it goes through a vote, we lose.
What we're represented on the committee is just as much as everybody else is represented.
Yeah, it's equal representation.
Even though we pay the lion's share.
Yeah, I knew that.
Yeah. But with, you're going to have to earn the votes, and to do that, I think we have to present the data.
Yeah, I'm going to get together the last six months of the run data, and Alex and I'll work on it and try to get something coherent. Because I did find out they do log every call and where it is. There's like a handwritten log at the station, so I'm just going to have to make some copies, and then you'll have what you need.
That sounds like a tedious plan.
It is. Okay.
Thanks, Jack.
All right. Do we have any, we meet tomorrow for law enforcement, so this was tabled from last...
Yeah. And then, it is on the agenda just to discuss at law enforcement, for the benefit of the other members, what happened here tonight, so they know. And then, we'll make sure that we're in the same lang, page with the language. So, yeah, that's it for law enforcement.
All right. Planning Commission, discuss and consider a request for approval of an ETJ CSM from the Kowtlenburg Trust to create one new 1.8 acre parcel from existing parcel, that number, located between County Highway TT and Pierceville Road in the town of Sumpere.
Yeah, I think that pretty much explains the whole thing. And if this looks familiar, you've actually seen something very similar back in August, which we approved. One of the other approving authorities asked them to make a few changes to suit their needs. It doesn't really affect us too much, but they did have to come back for our reapproval. So, the Plan Commission recommended approval unanimously, and we're looking for the same conditions that we had last time. We're, in our comp plan, we're looking for a 100-foot right-of-way on both TT and Pierceville Road, so we're just asking them to dedicate the difference to achieve that. Otherwise, we'd recommend approval of those conditions.
I'll recommend approval.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, all votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Tenny, Public Relations.
Did you want to go over anything else from...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's one other item. The Plan Commission did approve the site plan for Atlantis Valley Foods, but that does have to go before the ARC, and that's going to happen next Monday, and then it'll come here, January 4th.
Sorry to cut off here.
Is it next Monday? Or, I thought it was actually listed for today on the...
It was this morning.
We did not get a call.
Oh, it was this morning, okay, all right.
Okay, Public Relations.
We met last week and reviewed the additional information provided by the vendors responding to the RFP, and this is regarding the website redo. Selected the top two and are getting back to those vendors to come present toward, to the board.
For, I think, the second, was it the second meeting in January, the plan?
Yes, providing the vendors are available. It wouldn't be the fourth, there certainly.
Great. All right. Eleven, reports from village officers. Kyle?
No report.
Jack?
No report.
Alex?
No report.
Me. Well, you heard from the music, right? The musical, they just selected the cast. The musical is Legally Blonde. It's the first weekend in April. Do yourself a favor and get a ticket, because every year, it's a showstopper. They do just a fantastic job with that. Girls' basketball's off until their tournament in the 20s base, and the guys just lost to Wannakee, unfortunately. And I hear the wrestling team is having a fairly successful go of it, and the gymnastics team has doubled up their membership, which last year gymnastics was new, so that's a big deal for our school. I think that's everything I have.
Harvey?
No report.
John?
No report.
Lee?
Okay. You have a report. First thing I'd like to just mention to you, you probably have seen in the newspaper quite a bit of discussion about texts and emails and transitory texts, and whether you have to keep them or not. There is a, apparently, unbeknownst to a lot of us, that there is a, an actual organization in state government that is supposedly the overseer of the Open Records and Open Meetings Law. And they, in August, said, "Well, if it's a, if you have a transitory text, like a draft or something like that, then you can get rid of it." And no one knew about this. They had an agenda that said, kind of, well, 79 different things, and then they were attached, and it was, it's really been called into question, and it is unclear right now what's going to happen. My suggestion to you, very, very strong suggestion, is to assume that any text, it's not the method of communication that's really being looked at, it's the fact that it is a public communication, or it deals with your position as a trustee. So, it's really the content that's important, not the, not the way that you send it. You know, if you write something down on paper, and it would be an open record, then if you text it, it's probably an open record, too. So, you should just keep that in mind, and I have talked to people in the past and simply said, "You might want to put a little sticky someplace that you, that there's a reminder that says, you know, 'Is this something that I want to be an open record,' or that I would have no concerns about it being an open record.'" So, that's very, you know, it's important that people keep that in mind. I think that, I cannot see how the court would say that you can get rid of things like texts or Instagram, or, you know, I mean, there's just, the statutes are clearly behind, but I just want to give you that heads-up, that from my perspective, I think that you have, that you'd be well-served if you keep, kept that in mind when you're sending emails and texts and that kind of thing.
Did you start it out by saying, I'm sorry, Jennifer?
Facebook in particular, that one makes me the most nervous, because people see that, and then they can like it and share it, and all of a sudden, it's messy.
Did you say something about a draft text? I was going to ask what that is.
Uh, you have...
Well, if I have a text, but I haven't sent it, but I still, it's in draft form.
Right, you have a draft. I mean, it's just, it's, well, the governor, the next day, said, "No, you can't have these records, they don't exist anymore." And this brought a lot of attention to it. It's something that's evolving, but I think the simple fact is, just to, once again, reiterate, just about anything that, anything that you write or communicate in some fashion that has to do with your position as a trustee is probably an open record. So, I don't, I do not think that the courts will back off of that. I'd be really surprised. So, that's just something to keep in mind. Then, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the idea of filling vacant committee positions. And first of all, I just wanted to run through the positions that we actually have. Let's see, on the ad hoc architectural, there are two vacancies. There's a representative from the, both the Village Board and the Village Plan Commission. I don't know if that's been one person.
No.
Okay. So, you've got two vacancies there. In the CDA, you have one vacancy. In this case, it was Pat's position. It does not have to be the village president, but it does have to be someone from the, from the board. On Deer Grove EMS, you have one vacancy. There are supposed to be two commissioners from each municipality, and you're supposed to replace in 45 days, although I don't think anything will be...
And where are you, the alternate?
Yeah, I had asked Alex to come, because Pat...
Right. So, we have, we have a vacancy there.
It doesn't have to be the village president, it just was in the past.
It should be. We never, we never had an alternate for EMS?
We did, but I'm not clear how, who is and who isn't.
Yeah, we're going to get into that. Finance Personnel, you have a vacancy. The village president is a member of Finance and Personnel automatically, so you're missing that. For Joint Fire, you have, you're missing one board member. Pat had been on there. John and Jack are the members now. Ordinance, you have a citizen, you're missing a citizen member. Park and Rec, you're missing a citizen member. Plan Commission, you're missing the village president, who is a member of the Plan Commission and a citizen. And ZBA, you're missing one alternate member.
Do you have a path for us, or can I make a suggestion?
Well, I can, I can tell you what the ordinance is saying, then we can...
Okay, well, that's a path.
I missed the one before, right after Parks and Rec, one citizen, what was it?
Plan, Plan Commission. The village president has to be a member of the Plan Commission, and you're also missing a citizen member.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, in doing research on this, I found that there were two ordinances that were passed that didn't make it into the code of ordinances, and, I mean, it's something that we're going to take up with our code people, because I know that they had these, and I'm not sure why they haven't appeared. But, the first one is 12, 12-1H Appointment of Alternates, and that should be in the email that was included in your packet. And it says that the village president, subject to confirmation by the Village Board, has the authority to appoint Village Board members to serve as alternate members on any joint intermunicipal committee, commission, or board. And I went back and looked at the minutes, and I saw that the discussion was that the intent was to, for whatever reason, to focus on the joint, on the joint boards, and most of the joint boards are three to three, and we were wanting to make sure that we had our full complement of people. But we didn't really deal with any of the other committees at that point. Then, I did a little bit further digging, and primarily because Harvey called me this afternoon, and he says, "Do you remember back when Ken Dahl was president, I think we passed an ordinance about what happens if the village president doesn't appoint someone to the board, or to a committee or commissioner board?" And I did, I did remember that, and I didn't know if that had gone away, or what had exactly happened to it, because it didn't appear, doesn't appear in the code of ordinances. But it says that "In the event the position of any citizen appointee to an ad hoc committee, special statutory board, or commission, or a standing committee, commissioner, or board remains vacant for a period exceeding 60 days, any Village Board member shall have the right to nominate a citizen to fill the vacancy by submitting a request in writing to have the nominee's name placed at the appropriate portion of the next Village Board meeting." So, there was a procedure set up in the event that the village president didn't, didn't appoint someone for a period of 60 days. And so, I think that what we have...
Was it signed? Was it signed and approved?
Mm-hmm.
Is that in an ordinance form, or was that that second?
That's what's being passed, or you shouldn't...
It's in an ordinance.
Um...
Well, the...
The ordinance, it was actually passed in 2009, was a carryover from 2008.
This is the one that deals with the 60 days as well?
Right.
Okay.
So, I think we have procedures in place now that preclude this from happening, but it's the kind of thing where, you know, you get reminded that, "Wait a minute, I thought we, I thought we had taken care of this." But I think that the question that you need to ask yourself is, you know, given the, given the vacancies, and given the fact that you're going to have an election in April, do you want to fill these vacancies? If so, we may have to amend the ordinances. Are you willing to keep the vacancies open? And if you are going to appoint people, are they going to be for a period of time from the time of appointment until the time of election, or is it going to be to fill out a term?
I have some thoughts.
I have one thing to add. There's two in particular, the Architectural Review Committee and Plan Commission, that each are missing two, where, you know, at least one, you know, in the absence of the president being one, at least filling the committee, or the citizen position would be key, because we have been struggling with quorums for those two in particular.
And just a note about quorums, and that is, if you don't have a quorum, you really can't take any, any action or conduct any business. Now, at the CDA meeting, the person who was there to make a presentation had flown in from Texas, so we let him give his spiel, and then said, "Okay, that's all we can do tonight." But normally, if you don't have a quorum, you don't take any action, because you're not, you don't really even have the ability to call the meeting to order, et cetera, et cetera. So, for that, for that CDA meeting, we'll at least do abbreviated minutes that indicate that we received this report, but no action was taken. And it is a problem, because if we, if we don't have people call and say that they're going to be missing, or that, then sometimes, you know, everyone... or that, then, um, sometimes, you know, everyone gets here, you don't have a quorum, um, and for the next couple of months, it's going to be tight on some of these.
I think we should kind of prioritize, um, some of these committees that are with other municipalities.
Yeah.
We need to have a full village representation on those committees, for sure. Um, the ones that require the president, like finance, not that big of a deal to wait until we have a new president, because we don't generally do very much, uh, in the, after budget is done. So, I don't think that's a big deal.
There'll be a couple, um, higher, hiring related, but that's more just direction to me. So, it's like, you know, we're already approved, uh, the positions approved in the budget, and the Personnel Committee generally gives me direction on the posting itself and the process. So, that'll happen, but that's about it.
And any of the board members are welcome to, to come to those meetings anyhow.
Mm-hmm.
The, I mean, obviously, we should, we should appoint a cit-, uh, somebody to the Plan Commission. Aside from the president's seat, we should get that taken care of. And, um, Arc, that's the, that's the other one?
It's a problem, because it's only a five-person committee to start with, so missing two. You have to have everybody show up every time.
Yeah, so we, we need to get at least one person put on Plan, and does it have to be a board member? Or can it be a citizen, or?
Well, we, I don't think, so far, I don't think we can appoint board members. We, we'd have to change the ordinances.
Okay.
I think with this ordinance, with, with, um, do your little archaeology dig, uh, and finding this ordinance, uh, I think that you do have the right to name people to committees and commissions and boards, citizen members.
Citizen members. That are typically felt, filled by board members, or are these citizen-
No, I mean, these are actually citizen vacancies. And, and again, with, we could, you could amend the, the ordinances if you, if you wish to. Um, you know, I have some suggestions, I just wanted to get some direction from the board.
So, for, like, joint fire, that needs, needs a person? We would have-
We'd have to amend it.
Have to amend it, then?
Right, right.
Which we need to do, because it needs to be a board member.
Yep.
Oh, oh, the one with the sixty days is in this, too, so.
Yes, and we, that, I'd probably get rid of that. Um, you know, honestly, the, the, uh, no one really anticipates what happened as, as happening. And, uh, the statutes do say that, um, uh, that a position is considered vacant if, and it has a list of things that happen, and one is that the person, uh, is deceased. So, that at least takes it into consideration, but it has always been the prerogative of the village president to appoint, um, to boards, commissions, and committees, and, um, we really never anticipated that there would be a village president. But, um, I think it is possible to, to make some revisions that would allow us to deal with the situation, if you so desire.
Or does it make, oh, here we go, ready for this one? Does it make sense to just appoint somebody to be the president until April?
Well-
Instead of amending the ordinance? I don't know what the answer is.
I mean, can, can we just declare, is it possible to declare a state of emergency right now? And basically say, "We don't have, we have a seat that's va-, you know, empty. We have to fill these roles. Can we make a motion and approve a temporary fill until the president?"
I-
I mean, I understand the ordinance changes, but the state statute also says that we can show up to any committees that are underneath us, even if they go into closed sessions. But I don't think we can vote.
No, you can't.
So, that's a problem.
See, I, I mean, um, declaring an emergency is, um, not really within this realm. I mean, it's just not, that, that isn't what, what the statutes talk about.
But the government has to run, there's got to be something we can do.
Could you just amend the, the ordinance to say, "In the absence of the village president, the board can appoint?"
Yeah, um, if you don't mind me making a suggestion, which Matt just did for me. Um, if the office of president is vacant, then, you know, and allow, allow for, um, the board to, uh, to, to take action to fill positions.
So, we already have, we already have a sixty-day window?
No, you can get rid of that.
We, we have that right now?
No.
That's for citizen appointments.
That's for citizen appointments.
Citizen appointments?
Yeah, you can't appoint-
I would just get, I would just make it nice and simple, just say, "In the absence, in, if the, if the position of president is vacant, um, the board shall have the authority to appoint, you know, other board members or citizens." Nice and simple, and that is not going to, uh, it's, it's not like you're going to overthrow the president then when one is elected.
The checks and balances are still there, because it's, it's voted on.
So, we could, we could do, we could set up a, um, I mean, for the next meeting, we could draft the ordinance, and you could pass it, and that evening, if you want, if you had, um, people you wanted to propose to take certain positions, then, you know, we'd be open for that.
So, you can do that by next meeting?
Yeah.
Is that what everybody's saying?
I'm not really getting much for Christmas, so I'm going to have plenty of time.
So, as a suggestion for the packet, if anybody has anyone in mind, if you can have them, put some letter of interest together, and we can get that in the packet.
Lee, could you send me, like, a summary of all those committees and citizen versus, you know, just so we know what were in the holes last night?
Well, if you look in your packet, um, I-
Okay.
I made a copy of what Deb had put together, and that shows all of the vacant positions. And, um, at least for me, it was just easier to, you know, be able to, um, write them down. But they, they are in there.
Okay.
Again, ad hoc, architectural, CDA, EMS. I know, uh, finance, personnel, ordinance, joint fire. Park and Rec, I guess, too.
Yeah.
Planning.
There's a whole bunch of stuff.
Plan Commission.
We had a resignation right, right before Pat passed away.
So, with your, with a direction, I can, um, present an amendment that would make this cha-, that would make a change so that if the position of president was vacant as defined by the statutes, that the board would have the ability to appoint citizen members and other board members to vacant positions.
As soon as possible, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yeah.
Motion to have the village attorney... You want to read what he said?
amend the ordinance?
amend the ordinance to allow, um, board members to, uh, appoint to vacancies in, on committees.
Send the app to the president, yeah.
Okay, there's a motion, in a second. Is there any discussin', discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
And Alex, to your point, you know, it seems like it, it would make a lot of sense that there would be, you know, quote, "an emergency" like this, but in their mind, it's a tornado, it's a-
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, an explosion or something.
The government still has to run, I mean, that's the difficult part. And I think, you know, if I can't make a committee, I mean, the Y-1 committee, I'm not even, we're not even the chair, it's, it's a resident member for utility commission, so.
I think this will be a good, good way to just, um, deal with the issue.
Okay.
That's it for my report?
Are you good?
Yes, I'm good.
All right, uh, Maggie's.
Deb actually has a couple election-related announcements, so I'm going to pass my, uh, report on to her.
Okay, so, those incumbents, which would be John Williams, Harvey Potter, Jack Henrick, and Judge Hepfinger. Um, those of you who do, who do not wish to run for reelection for trustee, you must turn in your notification for non-candidacy form, which is Form GAB 163, by five o'clock on December twenty-eighth. Candidates who are running for trustee or president and judge need to turn in their nomination papers, declaration of candidacy, and campaign registration statements by five PM on Tuesday, January fifth. For the judicial candidates, there also is a statement of economic interest that has to be filed with the GAB by five PM on Friday, January eighth. Um, at the last meeting, there were some questions regarding running for one position or not, and whether you lose your other, your seat that you have. So, I got some direction from the GAB, Diane Lowe in particular. So, incumbents, incumbents can run for both president and trustee, but you have to file papers for both positions, and you're on the ballot for both positions. If you win just the president position, you would accept that position, and that would be that. Um, if you win just a trustee position, you accept that position. If you win both seats, then you have to choose which one you want to take. And whatever position you did not take, that seat is then vacant. So, in other words, if one of you ran for president, you won both seats, if you ran for president and trustee, you won both seats, um, you would take, you'd choose the president one, then you would have to appoint somebody for the empty trustee position, because you don't just take the next highest vote.
Or another election?
Yes, you would either have to appoint or have another special election. If you, if you don't win either, you're done until, and, until the next time you can run. Current trustees who are non-incumbents, you may also run for president. You must also fill out the necessary papers. If you win the president position, you accept that position, then your vacant trustee position is, again, vacant, and that position would have to be appointed, or a special election would have to be held.
If you win, but if you lose, you keep your seat.
If you lose, you keep your seat as though nothing happened.
Which I don't know why was such a big deal, because that's exactly what happens in the cycle. I don't know why we didn't connect those dots last time.
So, that's what I have. Any questions?
The GAB has some extra time to answer questions, so.
This is the rules right now.
Right, yes, that's a good point.
Okay, anything else, Matt?
No.
All right, uh, Aaron? And Mike Mommy. He's still upset he didn't get to sing with the kids.
He's singing under his breath, though. That's what he's going to do now, yeah.
So, a report from the village engineer. I, uh, provided a few sheets in the packet. Um, everybody got a map of the Commerce Park, um, a detail of Herb Road construction drawing, and then a estimate. And with the development, um, happening, and it's been a kind of awaiting completion of parts of the Commerce Park, um, two parts are Herb Road with the curving gutter, um, and the fine, finished pavement and base. And then, uh, the surface and wearing course on Commerce Parkway and Herb Road is another project, uh, that it's, we left the street in binder since, uh, two thousand six, um, because there literally was no traffic, uh, on that end of the Commerce Park. And with Steel out there, and, uh, the next development is happening to the north of Steel, this part of the, of the Commerce Park should be completed. The third piece of, uh, project, which is on Landmark Drive, is a crossover for a restaurant to be located between, and, Landmark Drive. So, uh, these projects were, uh, approved in the TIF V plan, funded by TIF V, and have been delayed, uh, waiting, uh, development in the area. So, it makes sense to, you know, to finish the wearing course and the street going up Herb Dr-, uh, Herb Road.
I'll just add a couple things. Um, the, the two items, the Herb Road and the Landmark Drive, um, removal of the median, would probably make those, as far as twenty sixteen construction contingent on the development, actually, on a development agreement being approved.
Yeah.
And then also, an, an overall, uh, I'm going to say, as Mike mentioned in his memo, he'll be discussing with elders, uh, before going ahead, certainly making sure that there's adequate cash flow into TID, which would be signed off by the financial advisor, so.
So, yeah, that's, I guess, a good point. All of those, particularly Landmark Drive, Herb Road, really are, are dependent on the developments happening, and those agreements and final plans haven't been completed. So, uh, we just wanted to let you know that that should happen this summer, if they do occur. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Matt.
Do we need a motion on that?
This is the report.
Yeah, so it was-
Just a heads up.
The, the plan was approved in two thousand five, um, and then the development-specific related projects, you'll be approving in a development agreement, so.
Right.
Okay, uh, communication and miscellaneous business, consider approval of vouchers.
Motion to approve vouchers as presented.
Second.
Motion, second, to, to approve the vouchers as presented. Is there any discussion? On here and then, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Uh, twelve B, do we have any correspondence, Deb?
Nope.
Uh, twelve C, future agenda items. So, we're going to have the briar patch, um, contract?
And the, um-
The ordinance-
Ordinance amendment?
Amendment?
Yep.
Anything else?
I suppose the overall appointments, if you want to submit, if any of you have ideas.
We could have the ordinance, and then be prepared to appoint that tonight?
Yes, you could, if you so choose, um, yeah.
I guess, give that-
Would it be interesting to funnel? I volunteer for something. Just funnel it, funnel it to Matt, that way it's not, you know, and then let Matt aggregate it, and say, "Hey, only one person volunteered for this." So, rather than going around and around, "Okay, you know, Kyle, Jack, and Harvey volunteered for this." You know, "Oh, I didn't know you did." And then you guys can pack it out and say, "I'll just fill in." Should we just funnel them to, just to streamline the process, or?
And I was suggesting for citizen positions, too, if, if any of you are, you know, recruiting someone, if they can just put together some sort of, um, cover letter of interest, or whatever they want to submit, and then we can have that in the packet, so then the rest of the board is prepared to maybe vote on a appointment.
Okay. All right, uh, we got on that? All right, item thirteen, closed session. The village, Architectural, Village Board will enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Paragraph nineteen point eight five, print one, print C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation date of any public employee over the government, which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility, administrator's evaluation process, in pursuit of Wisconsin State Statute, Paragraph nineteen point eight five, print one, print G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is, is or is likely to become involved, cozy kids, cozy kids corraling suit, in pursuit of Wisconsin State Statute, Paragraph nineteen point eight five, print one, print E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public property, investing in public funds, conducting other specified business whenever competitive and/or bargaining reasons require closed session, negotiate terms for potential development in TID number six by Horizon Development Group Incorporated.
Say it.
Just a second, we'll have a, we'll call. Kyle Root?
Aye.
Jack Henrick?
Aye.
Alex, just a second.
Aye.
Jennifer Pickle?
Aye.
Harvey Potter?
Aye.
John Williams?
Aye.